Good evening, everyone. We have the approval of minutes from our December 7th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Willie.
I have a few things here, Mrs. Cook. One, the council should have received a resume from Bruce Harrington and also Ernest Demby. And both these fellows are candidates for the Historic District Commission. They've been interviewed by Katie, and I believe Lynn was also sitting in on the interview. So they would like to have both of them as members. So I'm asking the council to approve those two candidates tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have the reappointment of Peter Cotter to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So let's get that approval also.
Make a motion for Mr. Cotter.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And for your information, the EEDC Board of Directors has added two new members this past couple of weeks. One of those is Doug Walker, who is a partner with McAllister Datar, Showalter and Walker. The other is Kari Langlis, who is the Managing Director of Beowulf Energy Systems. Both of those folks have agreed to membership for at least a year on the EEDC Board. Too many numbers. Also, with the council's approval, we'll send a letter to Ross Benacasa and Buck Duncan at the Midshore Community Foundation, which terminates our agreement with the discoveries for the Arts and Entertainment District. We'll begin the operation of that ourselves. So that letter is ready to go. The council is so minded, let us send it.
Motion to approve.
This is for the, is there a deadline for that? Is there a timeframe for the Arts and Entertainment?
You want to know what that is? The agreement was reached on March 27th, 2019, and it's 60 days from the time of acceptance to dissolve that partnership.
And so we'll be taking over that ourselves and running that?
And there's no, only changes in name only? There's nothing else that happens to the Arts and Entertainment District? I think Mr. Engel made a motion to approve the letter.
Second, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, at the last meeting, we had a couple fellows here representing the dog park potential. I purposely said at that meeting I wouldn't sign the approval for the dog park until we got some questions answered. Met with those gentlemen last week, and they are in the process of preparing a business plan and the answers to questions that we had given them. And they should have that by the next meeting. And we can go ahead and, if you're still so inclined, get that thing signed and keep We will be issuing the guidelines for the continuity of operations, and that includes minimum staffing and minimum hours, especially for the Police Department, through the end of next week. That's two weeks of opportunity to, the Police Department have had an unusually high number of COVID potential, and we want to get that in writing and have the minimum staffing and also the minimum number of hours and how we'll pay for those hours will be written down and run through the 2nd of January.
So this is for officers to get their hours down?
Pardon?
This is to get, have officers use their hours, get their hours down?
Right. Well, no, not necessarily. It's how we would pay the overtime is going to be the question on this one, because with less officers, they'll be working more hours.
Just a clarification. So this is due to the recent COVID outbreaks that we're experiencing in Tulsa County as a whole. What we're doing is reinstituting the minimum staffing, minimal time, and pay differential for the staff during this two-week period of time. So this is in an effort to reduce our exposure and our cross-contamination. With overtime, this is a pay differential for regular working hours for those employees that are working in the office environment or in the field. Reducing the staff to minimum staffing and minimal hours will result in some people working from home and some people just at home. This is exactly what we did back in March when the governor put a stay-at-home order in place.
Okay, yeah, so it's administrative. Okay.
All right, so this is just for two weeks?
Two weeks.
Yeah, I get it.
Do you need a motion for that?
That's it?
Do we have anything from the Fire Department?
Oh, we do have. C.R. Chance was elected chief. I think it's the C.R.'s fourth time around. So he's found a job he likes, and he does an excellent job. He really does. And this will be his fourth term as chief for the Fire Department.
That's historic, correct? That's historic, correct? No one else has been chief four times?
That's historic, and his father was chief. Two of his uncles were also chiefs, so it kind of runs in the Chance family.
Any questions for Mayor Willie?
Megan, I need a motion.
You need a motion. Do we have a motion to accept C.R. Chance as the chief for the Fire Department?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, President Cook. Council, I have one item on the agenda for your consideration this evening. The Academy of the Arts is attempting a fundraiser on May 1st from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They will require the road of South Street to be closed from Harrison Street to Tulsa Lane. And it's going to take approximately three officers, or three hours of our officers' time to close those streets to no parking and ultimately barricade them off to through traffic at a cost of approximately $138. The Academy of the Arts anticipates that there'll be 250 people in attendance for this event, but it'll be spread out over the day with 50% occupancy maximums at each time. The recommendation before you is for approval with consideration being given to Tulsa County Environmental Health and the Health Officer due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
So we can pass this with a stipulation that as long as the, it passes through the Health Department? All right. Do you have any questions about that? Do we have a motion to approve it with the condition of the Health Department?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then last, I just wanted to update you on some staffing additions we have offered, and all three have accepted, positions for academy, for recruits for the Police Department. Kathleen Copeland, Nicholas Lard, and Brandon Stiles will be attending the academy in January along with Chris Doyle. That's all I have for this evening, this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chaplin, thank you for stepping in tonight.
Absolutely. I have no items for this evening, President Cook and members of the council.
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
All righty. It's 5:35. All right, we have a public hearing to consider Resolution 6128, Resolution of the Town amending the Town of Easton Employee Handbook related to compensated absences, specifically overtime as compensatory time and vacation. So this is a public hearing.
So I'll just give a brief primer on that and an update. At our last council meeting, this resolution was brought before you for your consideration. During this two-week period, we did receive a large number of replies, both at the mayor's office, my office, and potentially others. We did respond to many of the ones that had been received internally, and I have drafted and you have available to you the resolution with comments on the side and some recommended text replacements or adjustments. The main topics that the staff had brought up were the conversation of front-loading, the vacations, and potentially the sick time. They questioned the ability to change the way that vacation and comp time was paid or unpaid at your final pay when you were either terminated or retired from the Town of Easton. There was a common topic of, again, vacation and final pay. There was concerns over the phase-in date of the vacation time. We made that adjustment internally initially, it was shown as July. Many of our staff wanted to see that coincide with the calendar year. And then one of the larger topic items was how the compensatory time read in that document. It was slightly confusing. We offer something that is more consistent with the way that the vacation accrual limits was worded in the compensatory time. So again, it was still keeping it at 40 hours. It was allowing it to fluctuate up to 50 hours throughout the year. Then it was giving the mayor the ability to unrestrict that 50-hour cap at any specific time in the year for a given time due to an event that was occurring in the Town of Easton, such as a winter snowstorm or a tropical storm or some other unusual event or circumstance. It's a very high-level overview. Again, in your packet is a more detailed resolution with comments that has not yet been provided to the department heads so that they can see the adjustments that have been suggested. But again, this is a public hearing, so we thought we'd get through this, hear any other additional public comment, and then work towards a way to proceed forward.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. And I do appreciate, I can speak for myself, I'm sure the other councilmen have probably had similar situations, but I appreciate all the employees who have reached out, whether it's via telephone, via email, who've asked me to meet with them in person. Thank you very much. I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to hear your concerns. And this is a public hearing, so if anyone has anything, any comment on Resolution 6128, feel free to come to the podium, state your name.
I think it's important that, in addition to what you said, that all the employees understand that we hear them.
Yes.
And we are trying to come out with the best solution possible that will not cause adversity
Evening, everybody. My name's Gordon Lee. I'm a employee with the Eastern Police Department. Speak too fast?
You just wanted me to address the Police Department?
The Police Department, yes, ma'am. As most of you know, I've talked to most of you before, and some of you do know, some of you don't know, we don't work at the Eastern Police Department as conventional 40-hour employees. And this resolution, by changing some of the wording in there from days to hours, changes that for us. For instance, the 200 hours, if you look on the resolution as it's proposed, for a 40-hour employee works out to 25 days of vacation for him. You do the math on us at the Police Department, we work 12-hour shifts, it's 16.6 days off. It doesn't help us. It makes things worse for us. When you put the cap on the timeframes that we have, we have one officer I know right now, between now and July, would have to take 200 hours of vacation off. It's two months. We're already shorthanded. You just heard Don Richardson talk about how we're getting ready to go possibly back into this 50% scheduling again. This isn't something that needs to be, it's going to be able to fix overnight. We're not standard employees. I'm not going to sit here and say that we are. We need to have something separate for us in this, the days, the languages versus hours. I understand what a normal work week is for most people. Most people have never done what we've done. I know there's a few gentlemen that have, and we thank you for your service. But it's, doing this would crush us, totally destroy what we'd be able to recruit with how we retain with. When you sit here and say, well, everybody else in the town gets 10 days off, but you guys don't because you don't work the same amount of hours. They get 10 days off, which is 80 hours. 10 days for us is 120 hours. It's a big difference, a day for a day. That's all we're asking for, and one thing that we want everyone to understand more than anything. If you're going to give somebody this many days off, then call it days. Some of the other things that change in there for the languages is on our transitional duty. It states that while they're on transitional duty, they don't occur in late time, they don't earn anything. But meanwhile, in the way the transitional duty policy is written currently, they could be in the office working and earn no benefits. How does that work? How is that fair? Those are just some of the big issues that are being brought up from my end, from what I'm hearing from the officers. And it's disheartening to know that I'm the one standing here saying it versus the man who probably should be up here saying it. I don't understand why it's being drafted in such a way that we're being alleviated. And I understand we're a small portion of the town, but we're a very vital portion of town employees, very vital. We're having enough problems now keeping people. The last couple meetings I've been at, we've talked about that. This will cause more to leave and make it harder for us to bring more on. If, when this is being redrafted, if my department head doesn't want to speak for us, please reach out to me. I will speak on behalf of the officers. So maybe our voice can be heard a little bit better and help come to a common resolution that helps everybody else in this out. I know there's some rumors and speculation on why it's happening, but it's going to hurt us just terribly if it happens.
Anyone else have anything? I know I'm not ready to vote on this and prefer to keep the public comment open. We still have some questions, and maybe the new resolution that came through in our packet could be given out to some of the, to the department heads for them to take another look at with some of the changes.
So I agree. I think that what has been drafted should be sent out to the department heads. My question to you as a council body is that, are there any of those that are specifically in there that you already feel strongly enough it should just be put into the text rather than left as comments on the side?
I know there's a couple things for me. One was the amount of comp time. It's still in there as 40 hours and 180 days. I feel it should be 50 hours in a year. And the personal days were not mentioned in there, about pulling them out. I mean, those are things that I feel should be listed in there. I think it also should be clearly stated about the mayor's ability to waive the comp time in case of a hurricane or a natural disaster. He has the authority to waive those requirements. I think we need to make sure that that's clearly stated in there. Those are the things that come to the top of my mind. Gentlemen, do you have anything to add from the resolution?
No.
Yeah, because some of the things that I think you have adjusted, because initially one of the concerns were with the time, like 200 hours for like 25 years, and the Police Department retires in 22 years, so that didn't make any sense. And I think that the wording, some should change, and I think that this is such a big item that it would be most difficult to change one piece of the puzzle and not look at the overall perspective, because you can't just change one thing without everything else falling around it. So that's important. I agree with the fact that there should be some adjustments with the mayor's permission to waive those criterias depending on certain times. Talking to Public Works, they get a lot of comp time during the snow season and things of that nature. They were concerned about the utilization of it. And then if an employee is, well, they can't be sick for a whole year to get some sick time because they have to accrue it first. And so the front-loading would be great, most of the front-loading, but then with some specifics, because you don't want to front-load a whole bunch of sick time and people take it and then they're gone. There should be some kind of stipulations on it. And go right ahead.
Yeah, so the way that we offer to do front-loading in this resolution was to do a semi-annual allocation, and whether that's, you know, November and May or December and June, so that there was some time availability during the holidays and the summer months, but a semi-annual allocation seemed to be a good neutral middle ground for doing exactly what you're describing, is allowing that to occur. Front-loading does cause many other modifications to be needed throughout the rest of the handbook. So what you have before you, although is suggested text for this resolution, there would be additional amendments that would be, needed to be made to other sections of the handbook to bring that consistent from the current allocation on a weekly basis to an allocation on an annual or semi-annual preferred basis. So that certainly was one of the most common trends, along with the clarity of the compensatory time and those limits. So I'm happy to bring those into the actual resolution if that is the major consensus of the town council.
Well, I was just going to add, I thought that with a lot of the employee comments, I think we've already started to make this document better. I think we're heading in the right direction. I think the fact that we have already, many of our employees have already met the first milestone that we had set up originally, which was try to be below 72 hours by January 1st, I think there is no reason to rush this along. I think we should take the time, do this right, take into account employee comments, take into account comments made tonight, and get some people together to work on this and come up with a plan that is going to help the town, but not totally at the expense of employees. So I agree with you. I'd say, and also the fact that one of our council members is not here this evening. I'm sure he would like to weigh in on this subject as well. So I would definitely agree with pushing this back and making sure we have the right plan in place before we go ahead.
The one thing that concerns me about comp time, it may be that I'm a little older and stayed in my ways, but I still look at the use and accrual of comp time as also a supervision issue. Supervisors cannot work in such a way to keep the employee from taking the comp time at a point that it's convenient or important to them. So I think we need to have something in there that indicates that supervision is part of the solution also. It's not just to be on the heads of the employee who's got comp time, is looking for a practical way to use it.
Gentlemen, any other comments? Otherwise, we'll leave this public hearing open until our next meeting. And I encourage, once the updated resolution goes out to department heads, to please get back in touch with your councilmen or any of us to let us know your thoughts. All right, moving on, we have an update from the Eastern Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you so much for having me today. In your package, do you have the handout for the slideshow presentation that we're going to share here? If not, I've brought copies, I can actually give those out.
I have. It depends on what your slides, yes.
Okay, good. So we wanted to come today just to give an update on the activities that we launched for the holidays, talk some about the activities that we supported for the holidays, and also coming up with New Year's, and then give a brief rundown of activities that we are planning for early 2021, and discuss some of the opportunities and challenges some of our businesses are facing, just normal business challenges, and of course, COVID is still there, and we still need to make sure that we are aware of what's happening in our community as well. So if we go to the first slide here, we launched, so I should point out, my first, my start date was November 16th. So I wanted to come in and make sure that we rolled out something impactful very quickly. One of the first ideas that we sat down and we just developed was this idea of the Downtown Easton Card. This is an entirely online digital purchasing system that if you would wish to buy a gift card for a downtown business that is participating in the program, you can go online, purchase it, and use it at many different locations. Some of the positives about this is that we were able to roll this out with 42 businesses in the first two weeks, with over 30 of those businesses already signed up and activated in the system, which means if you go online right now and buy one of these gift cards, there are over 30 places that you can go into Downtown Easton and use that card to support those businesses. I believe 34 is the number that we're at currently. We have already sold over $3,000 worth of gift cards in this program in the first week and a half. I think it's important to point out that we did a lot of our marketing for this tied into Shop Sunday's Holiday Raffle, which we'll talk about here in a second. Really, the marketing, the standalone marketing started this past week, where we actually were messaging to folks, please consider supporting our small businesses here in Easton by purchasing these gift cards. Next step that we're looking at, we're going to look at some grant opportunities to support this program and also some corporate sponsorships. And what I mean by that is that if we receive donations or we receive large sums, sponsorships, we can actually build in programs into this where if you buy a $50 card, you receive a $10 card for free. If you have a certain sponsorship level, it can waive some of the fees that are associated with purchasing these cards. And it's just, it's really a great way for the bigger fish here in the community also show support for the smaller businesses here. And finally, we're also looking to expand outside of our downtown core. Of course, it's, our downtown core has lots of businesses, so it takes a lot of business to get everybody set up on this program. But we see a lot of opportunity to really use this as a platform to showcase that Easton is more than just Route 50 at times. Folks that come from across the bridge, that go to the beach, may not even realize that we have a vibrant downtown. When you access the website to purchase this gift card, it actually shows you a map of what Downtown Easton looks like, and it shows you all the locations you can use at. It's really a stunning way of actually seeing that there's a lot of things here to do in Easton. So we're just really excited about this program. We've just had some phenomenal feedback so far from the folks that have signed up and activated. And again, we think that we're going to really support, really grow this. So I would suggest downtowneastencard.com. If you forgot about somebody, shame on you, but I have an easy solution for that now. You can get this card purchased right now and have a gift for them in their inbox. So any questions with this before we move on to the Shop Sunday's Holiday Raffle?
Is there something that is in the store window or anything like that that would denote this is a store where you can use this card?
Absolutely, that is coming. So we have little clings that look like the card itself. It says "Accepted" here, it also has the website. So folks that have the card on their phone, or if they have a printed version, will be able to see when they're walking around town where it's accepted, and they can also learn more about it. They can say, what is this? And the merchant can inform them about it. And I will also mention that we do not want this to replace gift cards for merchants entirely. If you can go in, if you know that you have somebody that you want to support and you buy a gift card, that money goes to them immediately. But it's not always that clear, cut, and dry. Especially if you live in California, you have somebody living here in Easton, and you don't know what to purchase for them for the holiday season or for any time of the year, this gives them the option of picking and choosing where they want to go. So maybe they can select something new that they can try when they come downtown, or they can go to their favorite joint, and that money goes right to the merchant as soon as they pay for it. It is truly just a MasterCard. It's a branded MasterCard that lives on your phone, or as I mentioned, you can print it, and the merchant punches in like any other credit card transaction. Thank you. All right, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we also, uh, launched the Shop Sundays Holiday Raffle. Uh, we wanted to bring something together to promote and also reward for the holidays. And one of the things we hear a lot is that Easton's sleepy on Sundays. While that's not always true, frankly, a lot of places do close on Sundays and there's lots of different reasons for that. But what we do see is during the holiday season, shops do open on Sunday. And so it's always been important to make sure folks know that they can come to Easton on Sunday and do shopping, but I thought that this year would be even better to reward folks for actually doing that. So we distributed, uh, over 8,000 raffle tickets, which was double our initial estimate of what we thought we were able to do. And we signed up over 27 downtown businesses to participate, which is probably doubled in what I thought we would be able to do in a short amount of time as well. Uh, in fact, many of the merchants decided to actually go ahead and try Sundays because they heard about this and they heard that they were going to have some support for it, which was a little nerve wracking at first because that felt like if this doesn't work, we're going to hear it from them. Uh, but luckily, uh, I think that the support was there for them. The first Sunday was okay. The second Sunday was very good. Many merchants reported back very strong, uh, from the previous weekend when it was really nice weather out and folks were really coming to town. Uh, last weekend was a mix. Saturday was a little bit okay for some folks. Sunday was not so much. Uh, but all in all, we had a lot of great feedback from the folks that did come out on Sundays and maybe heard about this beforehand and were looking for the raffle tickets, or when they came out and shopped, they were actually able to earn these raffle tickets. So I think either way, it was a positive and I see this as something that we can do in future years, just to kind of help push folks to do more on Sunday. Let's get away from the sleepy aspect of the Downtown Easton narrative and let's move towards something like this, especially as we get past COVID, hopefully by this time next year, and we start to see things like the Christmas parade come back and pictures of Santa, you know, on Santa's lap, things like that. And coupled with these types of initiatives, I think will be very, very important, uh, moving forward. Um, and as you can see here, the marketing for that, uh, we've been on WCEI and Winx, our, our fantastic radio partners, Star Democrat, uh, WMDT, PR, everything like that was sent out there. Um, I've had folks come up to say to us, we heard you quite a bit. This is great. I had some folks say they didn't hear anything about this. So, um, again, it's tough to reach out to people, but I think with our, with our smaller budget, we were able to do a fairly, fairly good job with it. And in fact, on the next slide here, if you'll indulge me, we have a two-minute clip here from WMDT. This is the segment that they actually came down to Easton that discusses the initiatives that we rolled out for the holiday season. That's okay. I can assure you, it was glowing. Well, I, I'll tell you, so they came down and took some great shots here of Easton. They interviewed one of our merchants. This is from Chesapeake Blooms, who was very encouraged by the initiatives, had pointed out to the fact that, you know, they, they felt that they needed the support. One of their neighbors has recently closed, um, here in Downtown Easton and was really felt like that this was a sense of community again and that they were really encouraged by it. And I think that just getting into news like this, a more positive spin on things and showing people that we're really trying to keep things going in the face of some adversity was a nice way of, of being able to, to, to spread the word about it. Uh, so any questions real quick about those first two initiatives? As mentioned, we rolled them out very quickly, but we're very happy with the results and I think that we'll certainly want to bring these back next year in addition to more for the holiday season.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I, I mean, this initiative is fine, uh, digital gift thing, but what about the persons that, uh, what are you doing to reach out to the old school persons that they're cash? Um, and how would they fit into this perspective?
Our, our motto and our, our messaging even when we were on the radio was if you feel more comfortable going into their local merchants to pick up the gift cards, we encourage that as well. And I know a lot of our merchants, they'll do phone calls and they'll actually do those transactions over the phone and they'll get those gift cards in the mail to folks to make sure that they can actually receive those. Um, so maybe I, I should take a page from their book and actually set up a system where they can call us. We can make the transactions in person, make sure they get those, those gift cards as well, because we would have the ability to print those out and hand them to them as well. Um, so it's actually a great question and great point, something I can look into to make sure we're reaching all avenues as fair across the board.
And, uh, one other question. Um, so what, with this new, um, gift card and, and program, are, we have a new website that should be up and running shortly. Um, is there any plans from you guys to inter, interact or interface with that so that, uh, people who again go to the town website will be able to link in? And also are kiosks that we have that, um, you know, have information about the town? Is that something that it could work there to?
I think it's a great idea. I think especially getting that information in the kiosk would be wonderful. Don, are you able to bring up, uh, the, just the website real quick to show the downtowneastencard.com interface?
Yeah, bear with me. Your website, right?
Uh, it's just downtowneastencard.com.
Yeah.
And this will go to the actual portal, uh, this will show you what the portal looks like when you're actually able to go online and purchase these cards.
So once we get the town's website that we approved up and running, we could put the link in there and, and tie it right into that as well?
In fact, if you, if you're on the easternedc.com site, there's a button at the very top that says purchase gift cards. It's very easy to click that and it goes right to the website. Um, and it really is the very first thing that you'll see.
That's Pennsylvania.
Yeah, we don't want Pennsylvania.
Yeah, Eastern Maryland. I did the same thing. Yeah, I did the same thing.
Our rivals up north, yeah. But even if you look at that first slide that, that I presented to you, that truly is what that website looks like. So integration really is just sharing that link. Um, and it makes, it's very streamlined. The very first option is to purchase the gift card. The very next option that's on the screen there will actually explain with the gift card, how it works and where you can go to use it. Um, even has an option that merchants can go to the very bottom and sign up to be part of the program. So it's, it's fairly quick.
What is the, what is the site again?
Downtowneastencard.com.
I just think the more places that they can come in contact with that, the better off we're going to be.
Absolutely. Yes, if anybody can share it on social media, that's a boom for us. Um, I think that having integration along the different channels would be fantastic because, yes, I think it's, it's really a powerful tool that's going to showcase our community and the more people can use it, the better. Um, I'm looking at it as almost, it's, it's a reassurance, it's a layaway in so, in some ways, that we know the money will be there and can be used. Uh, here we go. Uh, the money, even I mentioned gift, uh, for the grant money and, uh, some of the corporate sponsors, it's money that they can be assured that it's going to go back in the community and spent here locally. So it's his website, when it pops up, looks just like this, it has our branding. As you scroll down, you'll see the options. You can see the map right here of all the locations that you can purchase from. It scrolls, I think, as I mentioned, we have 34 of them that are online right now. At least a dozen are going through the activation process too. And that's just in the first, now, this will be week three of activation. So there will be a lot more that are going to be available on there. And this is also great for folks that, you know, we have a lot of great places in this town on that list that they have their own gift card, but buying a digital gift card program requires subscriptions, it requires a lot of interfacing, new, uh, new portals and things like that at the POS system. This doesn't require any of those things. It didn't cost us any money, it doesn't cost the merchants any money because it's all built in through MasterCard for them. And they provide the website, they provide, uh, this, this look for us as well. So any other questions? All right. And then we're going to take a look back at the, at the presentation here, other events and activities that were supported or that are being supported. Uh, we had, uh, met with Talbot Interfaith Shelter. They took, spoke about their Home for the Holidays event that they did these past two weekends, uh, which was really fun because it did provide the opportunity for, for kids and families to interact socially distant with Santa, to get those family pictures that maybe they were not able to get this year, especially the gardens of the Hummingbird Inn. They were just really done up very, very nice, lots of photo opportunities. I know, I overheard folks saying they were going to get their, their, uh, Christmas photos for their, for their postcards this year. And then what was really nice too is that they even came together with luminaries that they brought throughout Downtown Easton and provide a walking map and information of all the businesses that were participating as luminary locations. So it was just, it was showing that bridge between the community and our businesses. And I thought that was just really nice that they were able to pull it together kind of last minute like everybody else here is doing. And we just, it was a really nice turnout, really nice time. They're also hoping that they can bring this back throughout the years to kind of expand, maybe even turn up all of Aurora Street into a great lighted tour for the holidays. And then of course, we have First Night Talbot, uh, going virtual this year. Uh, that comes up here in a little over a week. I believe last week is when the Crab Drop was filmed, uh, right out here on, on Harrison Street. And they are currently looking for submissions from folks to be able to, uh, put some words of hope and inspiration, uh, some different performers from the area. So they're still supporting the arts. Those artists that maybe have been a part of the program for the last 27 years will be there virtually for the folks that are used to this event every single year, uh, which is important. We have to make sure that we're still supporting the arts. And I think that people look for the Crab Drop and they look for very Eastern Shore feel of this event, so they'll have an opportunity to do that online. So we're very happy to see that continue as well. And if we go to the next slide, as we mentioned, looking forward to next year, um, this is a breakdown of, of kind of where we're at. Uh, summer 2021, we had the Downtown Business Meeting, uh, that was organized by EEDC and a lot of feedback came from that meeting and many of you were on, uh, in that meeting and, and heard the feedback. So between, uh, November to December, they introduced the Downtown Economic Team. I was brought on board, uh, and we introduced work groups and discussed the different projects that we hoped to tackle just about immediately. Uh, we did move forward with the gift card program and with the Shop Sundays Holiday Raffle even quicker than we anticipated. So we're, we're a little bit behind where we wanted to be as far as getting the work groups go, but we felt that was a necessary step to take because those were going to be impactful at that moment. But we are still on track to be able to have our first work group meetings very early January, and then we'll move forward with having them discuss some proposals and some different ideas that we'd like to see downtown. In the meantime, we're taking, uh, the reins and working on some of the other initiatives. So on the next slide, if you would, we know that from that community meeting, outdoor seating, picnic areas and parklets were a big, uh, big priority. So we're going to look at that and make sure that we have those resources to roll out this spring. And especially when it comes to parklets, we're, we're working through our, our partners. Last summer was the pilot program on Washington Street that went fairly well from, from the perspective of the businesses. They liked the support, they liked the, the turnout that they had from that. We're trying to move it into a second phase. How can we have this be a little bit longer and less of a pilot where the town is supporting it completely and more of what the town, what the town is able to provide them from a resource standpoint, but the businesses can do themselves? And I think that's going to require a lot of work between us, uh, a lot of the different departments downtown, uh, for, for the town to understand what the regulations would be, some of the safety barriers, how those could be set up and, and taken down. But I think it's worth doing because we're going to still see these, uh, COVID restrictions moving forward. Again, hopefully by the, the spring and fall, we can go backward more than we are, you know, backwards in a good way, but we want to make sure that we have a, a solid plan that we can bring out for the, for the spring. So we're going to work on that with the town on, on that end. But then some of these other programs here, streetscaping, downtown signage, specific industry related events, that's where we're going to lean on the work groups. We're going to bring those folks together, our representatives of the community to come to, with us, to come up with these ideas and find ways of supporting them. Um, same thing when it comes to fundraising and supporting those initiatives. We're not going to be going to the small businesses and saying, well, here's a million ideas, now we need a check from you to make them work. We're going to look for folks that want to do it with, as a volunteer in their time or as we mentioned before, some of the, some of the bigger companies around here that maybe are always looking for ways to, to give back to the community, are always, uh, really excited to be part of the downtown. How can they come on and support these initiatives that support the community? Um, and then finally, the last slide, just other things that we're, that we're really tuning into. Uh, the Maryland Strong Economic Recovery Initiative was announced by Hogan about two, three months ago, and in that he earmarked millions of dollars for programs for small businesses. Uh, that's something that we want to make sure we get that information out to the businesses, but it's also important to note that even in some of those programs, it's not new money. A lot of that money is just clearing the backlogs for things that were applied for earlier in the year. So we still need to be cognitive of that and, and make sure we're advocating for more support as needed, especially as we keep seeing the, the restrictions tightening a little bit here and there, and we're really curious to see what happens after the holidays, if it's going to become even stricter for our businesses and if it's going to be even harder for them to stay open. Um, and, and in the same vein, we're monitoring trends. The trends are all over the place right now. We've had some folks that say their busiest day was Tuesday, when you would expect Friday or Saturday, but Friday and Saturday were, were much lower than what they would normally see. So we're trying to share that information amongst the, the businesses, but again, this year is very difficult, but it's, it's work worth doing. It's worth looking into those things and making sure we're reporting on that. Uh, we're developing, uh, bi-weekly reports and delivering those to the town of Easton. Um, on the, on the question of websites, we're building some new resources that we're going to launch soon that connects a lot of this information, but also will connect some new things for us. Uh, workforce development, there's job postings that the, that the community wants to know about, get, get out there to the community. We'll have some information available online to be able to push that out there and work with our partners that are already doing things like that. Um, and then just strengthening some of those communication channels here in the town because we're still seeing a few things where there's some lack of communication, uh, businesses that are being surprised by some things or not quite having the information they need in a timely manner. So we're going to work together, find a way to maybe do online forums if they could share that information, connect one-on-one. We can kind of be the, the moderators and the, and the conduits for that type of thing. And then as I mentioned too, workshopping new events, buying incentive programs, just like the raffle, we need to keep those going all throughout 2021 because there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to actually have events and gather en masse. But I think if we can reward folks that are actually supporting and coming downtown, uh, and actually doing what they can do to support our businesses, we should be celebrating them, rewarding them and asking for more folks to do that. So a lot to, to digest there. Uh, again, it's, it's not all dire, but a lot of the businesses have communicated to us that it's tight right now and that if anything more happens, we'll start to see more restrictions and things like that from the state or from the federal government, uh, it's going to become more dire. So we all need to make sure that we're really looking at that. And I ask folks at home at, all the time, and I echo the sentiments today, if there's anything you can do to support local, uh, local businesses, please do so. Reach out because they're always being asked to support our community. Now's the time to support them because it's been a tough year. So I'll leave with that. Uh, any questions for me on anything that we've just gone over?
Um, I just really appreciate the update. Um, we, we've talked with some, some local businesses downtown and, and I'm glad that we're addressing the communication thing because I know that is something that they have mentioned to us, um, with the changeover and just the uncertainty, um, they want to know, you know, who to contact, who, who to get in contact with, when they have ideas, when they have concerns, when they have questions. Uh, so I think that's really important. Uh, and I think the idea of getting planning started early, uh, for 2021, um, is good because I know that another thing that many businesses have talked to me about was the idea that what's going to attract people is giving them some reason to come downtown. And when they come downtown, they're going to walk into the store that's near where the event is and shop. Uh, and I think that that is essential to have, even if it's a small scale thing, which it might have to be with our current COVID situation. Um, you know, I think that that's going to be really important. So I appreciate you guys working on that.
I agree, and I'll even commend Academy Art Museum. I mean, you saw today, the Public Assembly Department came out for an event that's in May. That's forward thinking. That's the type of thinking that the community needs to be doing. There's no guarantee that they'll even have to do restrictions that, to, to that level by that time, but it's great their thinking that way because they can always adjust as they get closer. And so I agree, I think doing the work now, sure, rolling out initiatives and having two weeks to do it, I wouldn't do this all the time. This is not something that we should always be doing, but if there's something that we can do quickly, let's do it. But more importantly, let's look forward and do the planning processes and make sure that we're covering all of our bases because there are a lot of bases to cover.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Oh, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Next we have Resolution Number 6129, a resolution of the Town of Easton authorizing the mayor to designate a Main Street Program Manager.
This is a resolution that, again, is trying to, uh, make some clarifications about the relationship between the Town of Easton, EEDC, EBA, and, and this resolution effectively And, and this resolution effectively gives the mayor the authority to designate the Main Street Manager on, on an annual basis. Certainly seems appropriate, but it could change at any point in time. This is basically giving the mayor the authority to assign that manager.
I feel like there's been some, maybe a few more updates that have come in. I don't think I'm, I know I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight. I'd like to see how the next few weeks go, at least for me. I think that the application has gone in, I think for EBA already, for the state funds.
I think you take the opportunity to miss some funding by delaying this much longer.
I actually thought that it was just the opposite, that we actually run the risk of missing out on funding if we vote on this.
I beg to differ with you. I think you're taking the opportunity to lose some funding.
Do we have confirmation from that? So it's difficult, I mean, there's a lot of, there's two sides and we're not, we need information, I think, from the state, correct, to verify?
So I mean, we could certainly reach out to the Main Street Manager and find out what the status is. But we've not been given any updates from EBA regarding what their status is with the Main Street Program since, you know, early fall. And certainly we can take that endeavor on if it's so directed.
I mean, I was, I was told that EBA had filed the application and the procedures that were applied, that were approved by the state for this funding. And I'm just afraid that if we rock the boat and switch things midstream, they're just now, from what I understand, waiting for funding to come down from the state. I mean, we need verification on that and it's all kind of last minute information. But it's difficult for me to, at least, I don't, I mean, I'm only one of the four of us, but...
So, so whatever the status is with Main Street Program, this resolution would not unseat or undo any of those. Alls this resolution is doing is giving the mayor the ability to designate a Main Street Manager. I believe that you could act on this tonight. And we should get an update from the Main Street Program Manager on what the current status is with anything that had formerly gone on with Easton Business Alliance. But I'm unaware of any activity on their part that's been confirmed if this...
Gentlemen, how do you feel about it?
I'm in favor of going forward with it.
So if we were to approve a manager this evening, or the switch to allow the ma, the mayor to appoint the manager, if EBA still had, did have paperwork in and did have all the paperwork taken care of, we would allow that to occur first before any kind of transition or mess, or messing with what they've already done? Would that be the case? Or would that, would we institute a town, a Main Street Manager and start the process immediately?
So that, this is simply giving the mayor the ability to take that action. You know, he would have to tell you whether or not he's going to do it immediately or not. But I think the ultimate goal would be to reach out to the Program Manager, find out what the status is. We would not want to disrupt anything that is actively going on. But again, this resolution simply gives the mayor the ability to designate a Main Street Manager. At this point, would not harm anything that was actively going on.
Okay, it is Resolution 6129. It is eligible for a vote.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Abatella?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Reverend Davis?
Yes.
President Cook?
No. Next we have public comments. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council tonight?
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Kimberly and I'm coming in reference to a resident here in Talbot County. I just recently moved downtown Talbot County December the 12th. And when I moved downtown where I am living in, I discovered that parking was not there for residents. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a single person as well, and I'm also an essential worker in the healthcare field. And I was told that parking was $175 for me to park behind this building. At this point, with the degrees that I do have and as far as the financial that I have, I do, I cannot afford $175 to park when I live right across the street. I'm a tax, again, I'm a taxpayer. And on Friday, I came, actually, let's back up, on Wednesday, I came downstairs to this building. I asked questions on the parking. The young lady downstairs was very, very good at what she did. She gave me telephone numbers, emails to Mr. Davis as well as Mr. Richardson. I spoke with Mr. Richardson on the phone. I explained my situation, that I'm a part of the middle class. I'm not, it's almost like the working poor is what I am. I currently had to move out of subsidized housing because they were charging me a lot of money to stay there. And I had to, I couldn't, don't make enough money to go, say, live at the Greens at a private facility. So I'm stuck in the middle is where I am. I chose to move downtown Easton because I found a private owner who was willing to rent to me at a price to which I could afford. The property manager told me it was $175. Unbeknownst to her, she didn't know, I thought it was 175 for the parking lot over here. I think they call it the blue parking lot. Apparently, that pass does not apply for that particular parking lot. The young lady downstairs told me there was resident parking, but I did not qualify because this district was zoned for a shopping district. It did not allow for a residential. And there's apparently at least six residential apartments where I live at across the street. We have no parking. We have absolutely no parking at all. I do work at night, so parking back here, I would have to walk down a long alleyway, which is sort of kind of lit, but as a single woman, no bigger than what I am, I fear for my life and danger going back there walking. On Friday, I rode back there to the park as I got off from work early that Friday. There was absolutely no parking back there at all. Because those parking, half of that lot is designed for, I guess, city employees. And the other half is for, if I pay, people who want to pay for it. I then was told that there was another free lot down the, down a little bit farther. That lot was completely full as well on Friday. I then thought to myself, if I had given the young lady $175 on that particular day, which was, I believe, Wednesday, I still would have had to come to this lot and pay per hour. Because even the free parking spots that were there, they were all full. There was nothing there for me to park. And apparently, if you park there and you get a ticket there, it's going to call, if you do it too many times, there is a large fee that goes along with it. I was also told that this was on the mayor's budget to think about or to, to address, which didn't happen until February. And if he does do anything or consider it, it wouldn't go into effect until July, the fiscal year. Now, the problem that I have with that is that I'm a taxpayer. I pay my taxes. Oftentimes, I end up paying money back to the state and to the town. But yet, I'm not being heard as a citizen. I heard everyone in here tonight talk about downtown Easton and the economic of it and bringing people in and the shopping. But what about the six residents that live directly across here who have no place to park? Each and every person probably here has parking in their own house or a garage of some sort. I don't have that. I clearly don't have that. So if I have my groceries, I have got to walk a block or a block and a half, maybe even two, because of the lots that were offered to me. They're quite a distance away to walk and do this. I did not, I even asked for a waiver of some sort to see whether or not there was some type of exemption because there is a free parking pass for residents. I was told that I can't have any of that. I don't qualify for any of that because this was a shopping district. It upset me because I was born and raised in Talbot County, right here in Easton. Been here all my life. So now, at this point, I move from a subsidized housing. I'm not on public assistance. I have nothing to do. I work every day, a single woman, every day. So now, when it comes time for something as simple as a parking space, I'm denied. I'm denied a parking space for that particular, I think they call it the blue lot, is what they call it. And I was told, the only way I could park in that blue lot is if I pay 50 cents, I believe, per hour, which does not seem to most, doesn't seem a lot to most people. But when you're on an income that is only one income in your household and it's only you and you have other bills to pay, paying $175 to then not have no parking in any of the lots that are nearby, to come back and pay an additional 50 cents per hour, that's a bit much. That's a bit much to me. So I was asking for help in this situation. Is there some type of waiver? Is there some type of exemption? Is there something that can be done for the six apartments that live over here? Because I looked around. Everyone in this area has designated parking, from the bank to the Historical Society, to this building right here. And I believe there's a 32 Washington Street, they have their own parking slot. Hill's Drug Store has their own. Everyone has their own slot up in here, except, in this area, except for those six apartments. They have nothing. And we can't, and granted, I just recently moved here in downtown Easton on December the 12th, but my next door neighbor keeps getting tickets. And if she gets one more, it's going to cost, I believe she said $300, if she gets another ticket. It's not fair as a taxpayer that I don't have a place to park. I'm forced out of an area where, as being a citizen, you're telling me I make too much money. But I don't make nowhere near as much money as people think that I do because I had to move to really, to, to really survive. And in the midst of this pandemic, I'm an essential worker. I work with psychiatric people every single solitary day. I don't know who's going to follow me home, walking down an alleyway with groceries in my hand or even my bags from work. I have no idea who's going to follow me home. Because these are people that are severely sick, who know my car, know I'm in Easton. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't feel safe as a woman parking behind here. And yet, I'm denied parking over, on this blue lot. So I'm here to ask for help. Is there some type of exemption to where I can get something to park closer to where I live? I pay taxes, just like everyone in this room. I do. But I feel like no one is hearing me, no matter where I went. I spoke with Mr. Richardson. I even spoke with Mr. Davis. I truly did. But I, Mr. Davis did, he was very understanding on what I was feeling and he put himself in my shoes. But again, I was told, I was told when I talked on that particular day, that it was basically, there's a parking lot down the street. I can't, Brewer Street, I believe?
Brewer's Alley.
Brewer's Alley, okay. That's what I was told, Brewer's Alley. And I'm like, and then it was told that it was too far, that you can't, you know, that's too far to walk. But to walk when you've worked eight to 10 hours a day, serving the mental ill, okay? I'm tired. I like to go home too. I really truly do. But there's no exemption in anything for a resident. I would like for someone to hear me and make an exemption because what my understanding is, this district was once a residential district first and then it came into an economic or a business structure. And apparently, there's 42 parking spaces over here. And I believe 30 of them, if I'm not, according to the internet, what's on Google, 30 of them have permits. But when they tell me about a permit, they either tell me I can't park in the blue or it was going to cost me 300 or $375 a year to park over here. I'm a concerned citizen for myself. I'm asking for the council to hear me, to hear me, please. Because I do pay taxes. I'm not on the system. I have a college degree, a social worker, working for Crossroads. The mentally ill is what I do every day. So I'm just asking someone to hear me on tonight and to make a difference for a resident. Because it seems as if after sitting here all night long or all evening, you guys are very involved with the economic of this town. Very proud of that, considering what's going on through the pandemic and you're trying to make ways in such a way that the town of Easton can still survive with everything that's going on. But what about the resident? What about the resident? Who is willing to go downtown and support these businesses and have gone downtown? And bought many things, willing to buy the car that this gentleman speaks of so that I can support them. But where is the support coming back to me? Only on a parking space. That's all I'm asking for, a parking space. Thank you.
Ms. Kimberly, I didn't catch your last name.
Kimberly Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, is there on-street parking anywhere near you? Are you, I don't want to ask where you live because you had mentioned you're a single woman and you don't need to... But is there on-street parking?
There's on-street parking there, but I was told that it's parking free for three hours in the front. It's like maybe four spots there. But I was told that that pass does not qualify for that area. The residential pass does not qualify for that area. So if I park there for three hours and I don't come out, and this was told to me by, the feeder maid actually told me. She said, if you don't come out and move your car every three hours, you're going to get a ticket.
President Cook, Ms. Wilson is correct. The standard parking limitation for the Town of Easton on-street parking and in our parking lots, is three-hour limitation unless you have a sticker for parking, annual parking. There are two different annual parking permits. One is $175, as Mrs. Wilson has pointed out. That gives you access to five different metered parking lots throughout the Town of Easton. The $300 annual permit is exclusively for the blue parking lot. That was put into effect a few years ago. However, there are six other free parking lots throughout the Town of Easton. This is all of the public off-street parking that the Town of Easton has. As you all know, parking is a common topic of concern in the Town of Easton. And Mrs. Wilson and I did speak and I heard everything that she said. But there are certain property owners in the town, downtown area, that do not have private parking, such as some of the businesses and residents and apartment complexes that Mrs. Wilson has suggested. So that is kind of a brief summary overview.
Let me ask the question. So what she said was that if, in fact, she paid $175, but when she gets off of work, the parking space that she would have permit for, she said, was all filled. How do you, I mean, if, if, if she got a permit?
I don't know what the timing was. And it varies. I mean, our parking spaces are full sometimes, mostly during working business hours. Certainly, this lot behind us has always been a high-demand parking lot. Just like the blue lot is a high-demand parking lot. As you get to some of the outer reaches and other block areas in the Town of Easton, including the free parking lot that is down the street from here, as you get into those off-hours, those spaces do become more available.
Isn't there resident passes?
So there are three residential parking districts in the Town of Easton. They were created in an effort to alleviate other circumstances. One residential district is next to the hospital. One is next to St. Peter and Paul. The other is next to the Easton High School. Those residential parking districts were created to alleviate traffic concerns in those residential areas that had schools or hospitals close by that those users of those buildings or, or employees of those buildings used at a higher rate. So those residential districts were created to clearly be able to identify the true residents in those areas. There has never been a residential district created for the downtown. It doesn't mean that it shouldn't be, but there has not been a residential district.
And a lot of these second floors as apartments?
Yeah, there's a lot of upper story that could be converted over to better-used space.
So how can we help, Ms. Wilson, I guess?
Thank you. That, that is the question that I have. How can I be helped?
I, I should have sat down, but this is not a new problem. It's an issue that's come up most recently on Dover Street down in the area of the county council, county council office building, where apartments on the upper floor of one of the buildings there, the girls were being ticketed for parking out front on the street. I can't tell you right now how we got a solution to that, but we did. And we will have to do the same thing with Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, yeah.
The residential parking areas, districts out in our area for the... The residential parking areas, districts out in our area for the high school and for St. Peter and Paul, what they do is they force the kids to park further out into the neighborhood, so they really don't solve the purpose. They just scatter the parking a little bit, if you will. But let us take a look at this. I'm going to ask Kim, Ms. Wilson, for your tag number on your card. If you'd like, if not, just drop it.
I can go get it and come back to you.
Okay.
I don't know it out of the top of my head.
And we'll work, work something out with her, get her spurred away. It won't be tonight or tomorrow morning, because everybody's going to be in the spirit, but we'll get her spurred away.
Thank you. I do appreciate your time.
Thanks, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, and I thank everyone for listening to me and hearing me out. That was all I wanted, was someone to hear me, versus collecting a bunch of tickets that I know I could not afford to pay for, and that would have messed with my registration as well as my tags on my car. I need my car to go to work every day. Thank you all for your time, and I will get you my tag.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to bring to the council this evening? If not, I'll take items by councilman. Mr. Abatella?
Just wish for a speedy recovery for our colleague, Mr. Silverstein, and hope everybody has a great holiday and a wonderful new year.
I wish everybody best of the holiday for the coming year. I have two thoughts, though. I'm hoping for a more judicious and dignified use of social media within the community. I wish for people to use the social media for what it's intended. There's no reason for the amount of vitriol that was dispensed in the past year, both in email and Facebook. I think it's inappropriate, and I think we belittle ourselves. And the last one, to be safe and considerate of others, was to be trying to survive this pandemic, be part of the solution. Thank you.
I want to thank Megan, and Don, and Ron, and Al for helping me, working diligently on issues and concerns, and enlightening me on the things that are going on. Also want everyone to have a blessed Advent season, and I firmly believe that if God could allow us to make it through 2020, and He must be having something in store for us in 2021. When the mayor said he was in the spirit, I was like, man, I don't know what he's talking about over there, but I said, something must be moving in this place. So I just want to thank everyone, and I pray that we continue to work together, work through issues and concerns, and be transparent, lay the cards on the table that we, you know, get a better understanding of each other and work together for enhancing the quality of life of each person who comes to the Town of Easton.
Well, gentlemen, it's been a pleasure to work with you this year, and I know next year we'll face some challenges, but I think we'll get through it, and I wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season. If there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays.[1774.65]